Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. We have a deferred paper. We have Bill Number 2196. Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through E. 1200, 1206, 1204, and 1208, Spring Garden. And 1815, Rialto. Bill Number 2225. Resolution Transferring the Amount of $150,000 from the Office of Management and Budgets, Operating Budget, to the Workforce Development Fund, Budget Year 2019. Bill Number 2226. Resolution Amending, Resolution 863, Effective January 1, 2019. Entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Flood Control Projects by $550,000 and Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $530,000 and Increasing Swinburne Bridge by $20,000. Bill Number 2227. Resolution Amending, Resolution 432 of 2019, by Authorizing the Mayor and the City of Pittsburgh Ethics Hearing Board to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Rothman Gordon PC for Professional Legal Services Regarding Ethics Matters by Increasing the Total Cost from $15,000 to $20,000. Bill Number 2230. Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution 855 of 2011, entitled Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total Amount of $37,392.76 from Closed and Completed Projects Within District One Neighborhood Needs to Public Safety AEDs for $9,514, District One DPW Projects $7,878.76, and American Legion Post Number 681, $20,000. Bill Number 2231. Resolution Further Amending, Resolution 549 of 2012, entitled Providing Foreign Agreement or Use of Existing Agreements and/or Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Council Neighborhood Needs Program and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof by Transferring $37,392.76 from Closed and Completed Projects Within District One Neighborhood Needs to Public Safety AEDs $9,514, District One DPW Projects $7,878.76, and American Legion Post Number 681 by $20,000. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 2232. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Sheriff of Allegheny County in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,436.99 for Security Services Provided for the City of Pittsburgh's Richard S. Caliguri Great Race on September 29, 2019. We have the Public Works Committee. Mrs. Kelsmith is the Chair. We have two deferred papers. We have Bill Number 2002. Resolution Vacating a Portion of Gallatin Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District. And Bill Number 2175. Resolution Taking, Appropriating, and Condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for Roadway Purposes Certain Property in the 26th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Owned by Cessy Portuguese and Known as 45 Semisir Street and Authorizing the Payment of Just Compensation and Necessary and Incidental Acquisition and Relocation Costs. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have a new paper. Bill Number 2229. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to Receive $80,000 in Grants Awarded Per Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Executed on May 15, 2019 to Support the Development Fund of an Emerald View Park Master Plan. Urban Recreation Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have two deferred papers. We have Bill Number 1977. Resolution Naming the Stratmore Street Park as Andrew Joseph Cucaruta Park. A Public Hearing was Held on this Matter on October 30, 2019. Bill Number 1994. Resolution Naming the Basketball Court Located at 555 Lormer Avenue as Costa Court. A Public Hearing was Held on this Matter on October 30, 2019. That concludes the reading of the Legislation Up for Preliminary Approval. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Wednesday, November 6, on a very sleepy morning, right, 2019. Our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public, please come forth. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means the beginning of your three minutes. Yellow light means you have one minute to summarize. Red light means you please relinquish the podium. I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of council state. The comment is limited to matters of concern or official actions or deliberations which are or may be before council. Please start off with your name and either address or area. First speaker, please.
I'm Les Ludwig from Squirrel Hill and I'm here to speak of the word "vision." Mr. Scaramucci, a former member of the Staff of the White House, spoke of vision and the need for it post the current presidency. When we speak of vision, we have to start thinking about, well, what came first? Well, for me, it was called three cents, a charge of three cents per check nationally to defray the cost of education. And it was proposed, and I was welcomed to the Department of Education in Washington, DC, 30 years ago. And we're still hanging in the midst of, oh, we don't have the money. All the excuses that the political world uses to cover, frankly, a degree of ignorance because the President of the United States is walking right past trillions of dollars that I've documented here with the bar graph showing how many people are not paying any income tax and it's over 50%. And then to make the matter worse, he turned around and gave another $1,000 exclusion and raised the exclusion position from 25, I think it was, to 26,000. So there's more people not paying taxes. But that's not the only one. I have other ideas. And how difficult it is that John Kasich wrote a book, a guy who was the only man who ever balanced the federal budget, and he wrote a book about how to go ahead and produce a change. And can we bring the thinking from the grassroots up to reality and conclusion? And so I'll read to you something from, oddly enough, from Jewish New Year's Prayer Book. On Rosh Hashanah, we pray that all nations form one fellowship to serve what we call God with a perfect heart. It is appropriate to read of this first record, recorded covenant peace. Only through understanding and friendship will there be peace between nations. And a little thing called "vision." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Pittsburgh City Council. Stormy Mayor Montez, 4740 Baum Boulevard. I was at the Tree of Life Synagogue Victims Memorial at Soldiers and Sailors Hall last Sunday, and some of the members called a police officer over on me to tell me I was not allowed to sit next to them. My concern is that the event was supposed to be about healing and restoration, but we were not told that it was a segregated event until we got there. Every time something happens in the black community, we want the whole world to come to our aid, but when something happens in other communities, we don't step up and help. I showed up at the event to let the family members know that we care, but they indirectly let me know that it's okay to care, just don't sit next to me. I called the Pittsburgh Jewish Federation and the Tree of Life Synagogue to speak to Rabbi Myers, but was told he had more important things to do. We need to do better at stopping gentle and technical racism within the city. The Pittsburgh Special Events Office knows that the NAACP and Stop the Violence Pittsburgh are racist hate groups, but they still issue them licenses to give events all over the city. We wear Stronger Than Hate t-shirts, but racism and violence is still on the rise. How can the black community be upset that somebody killed Antoine Rose but not get upset that one of our own tried to kill people at Pizza Milano last week? The City of Pittsburgh is still racist, we're just doing it on the down low. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Giovanna Brown. I live in the Hill District. Tomorrow would be November 7th, was the day that my son was killed. But I want to say, our lives begin to end, the day we become silent about things that matter. That was Martin Luther King saying, "God provided me with the strength I needed at the precise time when conditions were ripe for change. I am thankful for God. Every day, He gave me the strength not to move." And that was Rosa Parks with the Montgomery Boycott. And I keep speaking out because my son said that someone must do it. I wanted to talk a little bit about my son so you would understand. Tony was very, very dark. He was 5'7", about 150 or more, but he was the type that brought the community together. When we moved to California, he didn't have any toys. We found, he was nine, we found a stick and an old tennis ball. When we looked around, here came the kids from the community, even the men. I remember when my son came home one day, when he was about 15, and he said, "Mommy, mommy, I met a millionaire. I met the white man with the big fat cigar." He was talking about Art Rooney Senior. He said that Art Rooney met him and his other friend at the gate of the stadium. And he was telling him about Northside being flat. He told him about his church. And he said, "I'm a rich man. Some say I'm a millionaire, but Tony, you will never be able to do this, not unless you continue and stay in school." And he was saying, "Mommy, mommy, I'm staying in school." And I'm thinking, "That's what I've been telling you all the time." And he was saying, as he went, he was friendly. There was a boat that came, swerving down. It was like a cruiser. But anyway, he asked the man, "Can you ride us up the river?" This man put stakes on for them two boys. He sat and talked to my son. He told him about staying in school. Do you understand that when I'm coming down here, I'm trying to make sure that the same thing don't happen to our young boys that are living today? If you don't have the knowledge, you can't stop it. Do you understand knowledge is power? Do you understand I've come down here for 22 years trying to tell you how we can prevent some things? I try to tell you how we can make money, the money you're wasting like the mayor with all that sick, sick paper for us to vote on the park, how much money could be saved? I know a lot, and I wish you would let me speak without discriminating against me.
Next speaker, please.
How's everyone doing? I'm Paul Harris from the Hill District. Could we start with the Lord's Prayer, if people don't mind? For those who choose to. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thou is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Thank you. Anyway, I'm here doing my father's business. He blessed Pittsburgh really with me being here. The billion dollars in revenue that will come to the city from this light being shown is the blessing he's shown and the example. He used me in example. I'm 57 years old. I'm a grandfather. I never had a job over six months in this city, but he blessed me with the ability to be a hustler, to see a robber, all that. I didn't know that I was the son of God, but that's the life he gave me. See, we're all here. We got a purpose. Everybody got a plan. You got a start date and an end date. And in between, you got to make it happen in that dash between your, on your tunes down. You got to make that legacy, that remembrance of you. Every one of you in this room, this is a historic event. And he told me, it's right here in the Bible, under King James, it tells you. It is written, "Man shall not live by bread alone, but every word that proceeded out of the mouth of God." It's right there. And like I said, as an example, he used me. This is how it happened. This is my court date over at the casino. It was a wallet on the floor. I was broke. I picked it up, but I returned it in a mailbox. They still charged me and taking it all the way to big court. And the man got his wallet back and all his cards. And this is the case that my father wants me to present to you to have a prop. And when we let the world know of this historic event, this is the case here. This is the example of what can happen if you leave a man broke, desperate, and hungry in his own city. I love Pittsburgh, City of Champions, like I said. This is the example city. And he used me as example man, a life of the death and the resurrection. Thank you. But can I give you this paper? This is...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speaker, we will now move to the roll call. Would Clark please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Mrs. Gross, Mrs. Harris. President Gross.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Yes.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the Finance and Law Committee, of which I am the Chair. Will you start off with deferred papers?
Bill 2196. Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale, Items A through E. 1200, 1206, 1204, and 1208, Spring Garden, and 1815, Rialto.
Motion to approve.
Yes, I don't know, it says motion to table here. I haven't heard back yet, so... Yes, please. No, I don't need you.
So is your motion?
Yes. Motion to hold a week.
Is there a second? All those in favor who've signed by saying aye. Opposed, there's a nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2225. Resolution Transferring the Amount of $150,000 from the Office of Management and Budgets, Operating Budget, to the Workforce Development Fund, Budget Year 2019.
Need a motion?
A motion to approve.
Need a second? Conversation? No conversation?
Finance. We have grants here. May we have them up to the table, please?
In your hands.
Hey, Grant, good morning.
Welcome.
Could you give us a brief overview, please?
Yeah, Grant Gitlin, Assistant Chief of Staff in the Mayor's Office. So this transfer actually dates back to the Construction Industry Task Force that the Mayor convened that council members, O'Connor and Lavelle, were part of, and also Councilman Gilman when he was a councilman then. And the goal was to primarily figure out how we could increase access to the construction industry for those traditionally left out. One of the takeaways from that was that the city needed to put money in the game and needed to create an ongoing commitment to workforce development. So in 2018, I think Councilperson O'Connor sponsored it, but sponsored the creation of this Workforce Development Fund, put the original $100,000 into it. And then in 2019, we set aside 150 for that same purpose. And so this bill puts that 150 into the trust fund. And next week, we hope to come to council with a bill on how to distribute those funds to actually get them out and help reducing barriers.
So let me just, one more question, please. So this was a budgeted allocation that we're just authorizing?
That's correct. Yeah, we want to transfer from the operating budget into the trust fund so that it remains and does not go back into general.
But can or won't be spent until we have determined what the distribution plan is?
That's correct, yeah. And next week, we hope to come back with a bill that is an engagement with Parton for Work, who's done a great job, we think, at least with the Learn and Earn Program, but frankly is the publicly controlled and receives all of the money for workforce. So we want to partner with them on primarily, if somebody is coming into an apprenticeship program or a pre-apprenticeship program and has some issue that's keeping them from advancing, we would like to see that money be used to help them break down that barrier. And also a portal that has in one place, location of all those opportunities, which currently doesn't exist. So, but yes, the money would not go out the door without council considering who's going to spend it and how it will be spent, so.
So is there a reason why we wouldn't do both at the same time? Just, I'm thinking about...
The only reason that we... The only reason that we proceeded this way is that we felt that it was appropriate to do the transfer to the fund before we asked for money from the fund to go out the door. If you want to hold it for a week, it makes no difference to us. It's, that's why we did it that way.
I'm happy to go with the will of council, but I understand. Thank you. Yep.
Yes, what does that mean? Or don't you know yet? You said apprentice programs.
Yeah, so the programs that the task force primarily was talking about were programs that get people ready to work, that provide any skill gaps that they might have, like being able to take the test that's required to enter into an IBW electrician program is an example of, you know, the type of thing we hope that it would go to support. So, but also it could be, you know, fines and fees that people accrue throughout life and is holding them back from getting access to that permanent job. So we hope...
There already is for the apprentice programs, a program to get him ready for the program to be an apprentice. So what else would the city do?
So our engagement would help them pay for those fines and fees, and also the apprenticeship programs don't actually cover everything. So transportation, for example, you are expected to show up with a driver's license and a car. And I think the unions, in the cases that it's union, do try to work with people, but it's not a given. So we want to make sure that if you go and sign up for one of those programs, that you have money...
A car and...
If you have a car, if you have any issue with getting a driver's license, that you have actual money to help you pay down issues you might have with that, that if you can't afford tools. Again, a lot of apprenticeship programs do help you pay for them, but in the case they don't, we don't want you to drop out of the program simply because that's an issue. And when I say "we," I mean all the stakeholders that were around that task force. It's not just the Mayor's Office.
So these would be adults? These wouldn't be anyone under 18?
No, no. But the range would, you know, it could be anybody coming out of high school all the way through, anybody who's looking to get into the construction industry at any point in life, so.
Because the state has programs for that.
Yeah, the state provides a lot of support to apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs.
So I just can't understand how any of that would have worked in with this.
How the state money works in with this?
Well, the state has money for adults that don't have, that don't have a pro, don't have...
So the state money typically goes to running those programs, but what the task force found is that when it comes to fines and fees and training that's beyond those programs, that there is not money for that. That they go and they help, they help the various, you know, apprenticeship programs run and build new facilities. But again, if you have a fee that's keeping you or fine that's keeping you from getting a driver's license, there's not typically money to help you pay for that. If you need extra tutoring to make sure you can pass the required math test, there's not typically money for that to happen. So we want to make sure that if you're in that position, that you both have the money and that you're connected to the organization that is kind of most involved in that work. And that's the workforce board, so.
So this would be for over 18 with programs that the state already has developed to do that type of work for the trades.
Yeah, for the...
And it also takes them into the school, CCA C, and then it takes them into the apprentice program. So I'm not understanding that. Are you going to do the same thing for college students? Because what I see a lot of is everybody wants to push people into the trades that don't have what it takes to become a trade. But where are we helping them get into college programs?
Yeah, I think that could be a path. I mean, our hope and part of the reason that we want to bring to council next week this agreement with Partner for Work specifically, is that we think that there are multiple paths. I mean, frankly, there are people that are already out there and have one minor issue and simply need help paying that. So you might go directly, apply for the IBW and their apprenticeship program, pay that off, and you'll be fine. You may also instead come through, you know, the Builders Guild has a program that they were running at the Energy Innovation Center, for example. It's been very successful. But you might come through that program and you need, you know, nine to 16 extra weeks to figure out what the construction industry is all about, and you need more training than others. So I think there's different paths, but our hope is that they get into a state-certified apprenticeship program, because those are the ones that pay the most, that have the best benefits. Yeah, so. But I think there's a bunch of different paths, just depending on where you're at in life, and that's why Partner for Work is...
And college doesn't...
College can, yeah. I think college can. I think there are plenty of people that...
I mean, just so you're pushing them into all the different areas and not just, you know, throwing people that don't have the ability to go into a trade.
Yeah, our intention is not to force people into the construction trades. I mean, I don't want to take too much more account of time, but the reason we started the task force is because people were seeing construction happening in their communities and not seeing anybody that looked like them on the job. And so that was our task as a commission, was to tackle that. There are, I think there are parents that have been upfront with us that have said, "We do not want our kid to go into the construction industry." And Partner for Work is helping through Learn and Earn and through partnerships with PNC and a lot of other different work to make sure that they get into other careers. We just want to make sure that if you want to go into construction, that first and foremost, if you're ready and don't need any training, that you have access, that you can just go onto a website and find out where to get a job. And if you do have additional support that you're needed, that the city is playing its small part in making sure that happens, because it's just not right that 500 bucks should hold you back from, you know, having an $80,000 career. And that's just real, that's happening right now, today, all across the city of Pittsburgh, are people that have a minor amounts of money that they owe, really want to be in the building trades and just can't get there for a variety of different reasons, so.
Well, I don't think they're going to take anybody with a history, and as far as people that look different, they do those programs through the Pittsburgh Public Schools.
The trades have been great partners on this.
I would check into that, because there are many people in each of the trades that don't look like you or me.
Yeah, no, that, everybody in the workforce space has been very supportive of the building trades, actually, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year after we did this task force, they're running their own program for anybody who isn't ready to go. So I don't think there's anybody who isn't working towards, towards helping people, but...
Councilwoman, may I?
Okay.
Councilwoman, are you done?
So the next is Councilwoman, are you done, Mrs. Harris?
Yes, I...
Councilwoman Smith?
I'm just going to get my time back.
Yep, that would be correct. Ms. Gross?
Thank you, appreciate it. So I was recollecting now, I hadn't forgotten about the task force, and I think it's a great idea, but can I ask some questions about the process? Kind of like, when was that and what's happened in between?
Sure.
So that was what year, you said?
In 2018 is when we wrapped up. I think that the task force unfortunately dragged out over a year. But yeah, in 2018 is when we, and it wasn't just this item, council also passed a piece of legislation around project labor agreements, but yeah, in 2018 is when it wrapped up. And between now and then, if I may, I don't want to take, but what we've been doing is, one, we had a lot of assumptions about what was the right way to go, and we further convened more people in the construction industry, more contractors, to make sure that whatever money we were going to spend was going to get out the door. And it's just taken us way too much time to get to this point. There's no other excuse but that. So we have had $100,000 sitting there, and for most of 2019, we've had $150,000 sitting there. And we needed to get pen to paper and bring it to council about how we thought it could best get out the door, and that simply hasn't happened until now, and that's really all there, you know, there's...
So you've been working with Partners for Work?
Partner for Work was at the original table, yeah, and then they helped convene kind of a second round. So the original table was Partner for Work, Sylvia Wilson from the district, two members, three members of city council, and a number of community-based organizations like Community Empowerment Association, Pittsburgh Trade Institute, DeWitt Walton's A. Philip Randolph Program. So it was a lot of different people that work in trying to get people who aren't typically included in construction onto jobs, so, yeah. So, and Partner for Work was one of those, and then the follow-up kind of group, Partner for Work helped facilitate, because, I mean, this predates my time, but you know, they did a report dating back, I don't know, three years, that talked about the barriers to entry. I mean, the truth on this topic is that I think it's, the issues have been very well-known for a lot of, you know, for many years, and it's just about, are we putting resources into addressing them? And the mayor's not the first one.
And how to do that most effectively with, you know, at least some amount of public dollars, of course. But, so the co-op agreement that we don't have in front of us, you've been working with Partners for Work on drafting that co-op agreement, so it's drafted?
We have done internally. There's no co-op agreement. All we are bringing to council is an authorization to enter into it, and essentially, the ideas for what we would spend that money on. The co-op agreement needs to be drafted. We're happy to get it to council, as, you know, we've agreed to, and I think you've requested it many times, but there is, there is no co-op agreement that has been drafted by Partner for Work. All we have told them is that we think that they are the appropriate entity, but that that's up to city council.
You see where I'm going with this? Thank you for being, understanding the question. So, you know, if we're going to enter into a co-op agreement from a trust fund, and that the nonprofit, Partner for Work is a nonprofit...
That's correct.
The nonprofit partner has been at the table for years of discussions, and it then becomes the recipient of our cooperative agreement, right? That I think we want a little more daylight on kind of the conversation, right? So, well, it's, lowering barriers to entry is a fantastic mission, right? And I fully support that we need to, this is a rightful place for us to spend our time and energy and public conversation around, we engage actual Pittsburgh residents in benefiting from this construction boom doesn't even really, it's still not even satisfying enough word, right? Because it's really, it seems like more construction than the city of Pittsburgh has ever seen at one time. I don't have the numbers to prove that, but it just seems insane, and that we feel like a lot of those jobs are going to people who are not city residents, and so this is a right, you know, gap to bridge. But I think we want to be more public about the process, so I appreciate that council members were participating in the conversation. It hasn't been at this table, and so if we're going to pursue a cooperative agreement with a nonprofit that has been integral to the conversation, I just feel like I want a little public dialogue about it. So I just, I just wanted to note that for members, and that, again, we want to make sure that the cooperative agreements stay in the public eye. So while we may authorize the agreement, I think we should also see it before it's executed. So, like, you know, we've been having this conversation repeatedly about a variety of kinds of things, so I appreciate your time.
I think that's fair, and I think we're happy to talk about why we believe Partner for Work is a nonprofit, that that co-op agreement is not privatization, but is in fact their actual mission and how they've been successful in the past, so just to address all those issues. And share the co-op agreement openly, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
So I'm just going to echo what Councilwoman Gross and Harris had to say, that I would like to see or have more public conversation. I, you know, yesterday, we watched, I think it was the eighth of the city decide to vote to tax the rest of the city, and, you know, we're giving that money again, we're talking about giving it to a nonprofit, which is not necessarily the nonprofit that lobbied for the referendum. We can decide where we want that money to go. And so I think that's a conversation council's having now. And I just think that, you know, when we're going down this road, it does seem like we're privatizing a lot of our departments, one by one. And it seems to me that HR could do some of this work internally. And you say that's not privatization, but how many employees, did we have any employees that worked for Partners for Work or to do work on the summer youth employment and all this training, and do we still have them?
Yeah, we do.
The same amount?
Most of the Pittsburgh partnership was assigned to it, and they all still have, they all still have jobs.
Okay.
But I still think your question stands, and we're happy to answer for why it's a good partnership.
Well, I think that we have to have, I think council needs to put something in place about public-private partnerships, period, because I think the more we go down this road, the more we're subjecting other departments to the same sort of, what feels like privatization in a lot of ways. And it may be just really good government to try to partner with people, and, you know, that may be, that may be the decision when it's all said and done. But I think at the same time, we have to really explore this, this partnership. There's nothing really solid that's really guiding us. It's just, you know, the will, when, you know, legislation comes forward, we get an opportunity to discuss it. We should really be discussing those partnerships before they come to the table and what that process should be for the city of Pittsburgh. So I think that Councilwoman Gross and I, and Councilwoman Harris, and I believe some of my other colleagues, Councilman Cockhill and others, have been discussing ways that we can address this. And I think even Councilman Burgess has mentioned stuff about, you know, us all standing together to come up with some, some plan for council. So I think, having said that, I would like to hold this until we have a further discussion, just one week until we have both bills on the table. And I think it would be great to have Partners for Work and the HR department, which I anticipate they're going to say whatever the administration wants, because that's what, they work for the administration. But I really respect the director there, and I think that I'd like to hear that this is, you know, in her opinion, a good plan, too.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk more with council and talk about why...
But I want to be honest, I don't know that she's going to say anything different than the administration, because she does work at the will of the mayor, so.
Yeah, I think that Director Manuel is always honest about...
I think she's honest, but I think that we can't put her into much of a difficult situation. I wouldn't want to do that to her, but I do want to have some answers. And I, and I think that council needs to sit down and start coming up with ideas on how we can pursue some of these partnerships, what makes sense, what doesn't, and when it's too much, too much, and when are you privatizing department by department, you know, one at a time. So I think we have to have those conversations.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the administration and council members for being supportive of this project, and, you know, if the bill has to wait till next week, I don't think there's any problem with that. Councilman Lavelle and I were on this task force. It worked out very well last year. It's getting people opportunities where they, unfortunately, based on private sector jobs or non-public projects, they're not seeing work within their own neighborhood. So it worked out real well. I would thank Grant for coming over today, and I'll make a motion to hold one week, so both bills are at the same time.
Second.
Motion to hold. Can we just hold it and come back next week, Mrs. Harris?
I just had one more thing I wanted to say.
Do you mind delaying the motion, Mr. Connor? Go ahead, Mrs. Harris.
Okay. On the privatization that Councilwoman Smith spoke about, is if you count the number of jobs since this administration have come in, there's, was a lot of jobs that we could have probably gave to some of these people. And as she said, with privatization, and I'll give a fine example, is asphalting. We are paying double and triple to have our streets asphalted. They're not asphalting them correctly. The water's running against houses and getting in the houses. I mean, it's just not like having your own. There's a whole department right there. And out of the $200 million that has already been taken out in bonds, asphalting isn't what we should be paying for. But...
Thank you very much.
If you put on and buy an asphalt machine and bring our own people on, I mean, you've got to start thinking of what you can do within, instead of bringing other organizations in to do everything when we probably have over 100 people working for this city now that never worked before, but we've never given any of these people that you're talking about opportunities to come here to work. Thank you.
Motion to hold, and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2226, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDBG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Flood Control Projects by $550,000, Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $530,000, and Increasing Swineburn Bridge Tip by $20,000.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation? Ms. Harris?
Is this the Swindell Bridge or Swinburne Bridge?
It says Swinburne.
Swinburne.
Which one is it?
Between Greenfield and Oak.
Need the conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Thank you very much. Next bill, please.
Bill 2227, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 432, which authorized the mayor and the city of Pittsburgh Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with Rothman Gordon P.C. for professional legal services regarding ethics matters by increasing the total cost from $15,000 to $20,000.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. You can read the next...
Obstain.
Obstain. Next two bills, you can read together?
Bill 2230, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855, by transferring a total of $37,392.76 from closed and completed projects within District One Neighborhood Needs to Public Safety AED $9,514, District One D.P.W. Projects $7,878.76, and American Legion Post Number 681, $20,000. Bill Number 2231, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 549, for the purchase of materials, supplies, equipment, and/or services for City Council Neighborhood Needs Program, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof by transferring $37,392.76 from closed and completed projects within District One Neighborhood Needs to Public Safety AED $9,514, District One D.P.W. Projects $7,878.76, and American Legion Post Number 681, $20,000.
Thank you very much. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's written amendments in front of you, Ms. Harris. Do you hop, do you mean, do you wish to offer these written amendments?
Yes, I do.
Need a motion to offer the amendments? I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to amend, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Now we're on the bills themselves. All those in favor, signify by saying, do you want to talk about them?
I just, no, I just want to, I'm hoping that, Bill, I'm hoping that we have East Allegheny for the $10,000.
Allegheny West.
I know, that's 10, but there was East Allegheny.
Yeah, I think that might have been done already.
Okay.
I'll have to double-check.
Okay. If there's any problems, we can do something right before we vote. We'll have a written amendment.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Thank you very much. That takes us to the invoices. Stay there, Bill. I need a motion for the invoice.
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation on the invoices? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Move my fingers faster. That brings us to end of part mill transfers. They're on the table. I need a motion for the transfers.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, what I'm starting to see is a lot more food and nothing else done with it. And I hope if, if it's for staff, they're not getting a paid lunch, plus they're getting paid through this program. That went on through the school district and I had that put to a halt at that time. And it's not right if you're getting paid for lunch, plus getting your lunch. So, Bill, if you could take note of that and just make sure, because before I was seeing, you know, things that they really needed to get in transactions, and now it seems like, oh, there's this food. Okay, so if you look into that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other conversation? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Peacarts finally on the table. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Conversation about the peacarts. If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Thank you very much, Mr. Urbette. That takes us to Public Safety Service Committee. Mr. Lavelle is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 2232, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of the Sheriff of the County of Allegheny in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,436.99 for Security Services Provided for the City in the Richard S. Calligery Great Race on September 29th, 2019.
Need a motion, Mr. Lavelle?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. That takes us to Public Works Committee. Ms. Kell Smith is the chair. We have deferred papers.
Bill 2002, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Gatlin Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District.
Motion to hold three weeks.
Second.
Second. Any conversation? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 2175, Resolution Taken, Appropriating and Condemning by the City for Roadway Purposes, Certain Property in the 26th Ward Owned by Cessy Portuguese, Known as 45 Sisemere Street, Authorizing the Payment of Just Compensation and Necessary and Incidental Acquisition and Relocation Costs Related thereto.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Smith?
I defer to Councilwoman Harris, that's in her district.
Yeah, I think we hand that on hold for two weeks, not one.
Make a motion.
Motion to hold a week.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair.
Bill 2229, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of City Planning to Receive $80,000 Grant Award per Agreement between the City and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, executed 5/15/19, to Support the Development of an Emerald View Park Master Plan and to further enter into contract to hire consultants. Mayor Chase aforementioned master plan with additional city expenditures local match not to exceed $55,000 for a total contract value not to exceed $135,000.
Ms. Gross, need a motion?
Motion to hold one week?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. It takes us to Urban Recreation Committee, Mrs., Mr. Calke.
Can I just add, please? I would like, Councilwoman, could you make sure that someone comes and discusses that bill with us?
There's someone here for today, but we'll make sure they're there for next week, too.
Yeah, I think that they should at least come in to talk to Councilwoman Gross and myself.
Okay, great.
Urban Recreation Committee, Mr. Calke is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1975, 77, Resolution Naming the Stratmore Street Park as Andrew Joseph Cucaruta Park.
Need a motion, Mr. Calke?
Motion to approve.
Need a second? Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1994, Resolution Naming the Basketball Court as Costa Court.
Need a motion, Mr. Calke?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Before I ask for comment from members, I do have some announcements. This afternoon, with sessions beginning at 1:30 and 2 o'clock, council will hold a briefing on the Steel Valley Authority's Early Warning Tools and Other Services Offered. Also, today at 2:30, council will hold an executive session on professional services agreement. On Thursday, November 7th, at 2:00 p.m., at the request of Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, council will hold a public cast post agenda discussion on the disposition of publicly-owned property sold by the city of Pittsburgh. And due to the Veterans Day holiday next Monday, November 11th, all council and clerk offices will be closed. And next Tuesday, November 12th, council's regular meeting will commence with the mayor's 2020 budget address. Budget hearings are set to begin on Wednesday, November 20th. Members, starting, would you go down the line, starting with President Cross?
Just quickly, being that it is Veterans Day and we are closed on Monday, just a reminder, the parade is Saturday, begins at 10 a.m. Thanks.
10:30. Is it?
The mayor at 10 o'clock.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I was going to do the same thing, remind everybody about the parade, but I also want to congratulate all my colleagues who ran for office yesterday and were all re-elected. Congratulations and look forward to working with you guys, continue working with all of you. And I just want to say, yesterday we had the vote and it really showed how divided our city is. Well, I can't even say divided, because an eighth of the city decided to tax the rest of the city. And southwest of the river really came out very different in the elections overall than the rest of the city of Pittsburgh. But I really think that we, we talk a lot about how the importance of affordable housing and making sure that we're not gentrifying our neighborhoods and making sure rents remain affordable, but yet we continue to put tax in referendums forward and work with organizations that do those sorts of things, where they're going to pass those costs on to the renters. And if you talk about property values and what the benefit to having great parks does to properties, it also increases the property values in the city, which also contributes to gentrification of the area. So I want us to, you know, quit talking out of one side of our mouth and then doing something on the others, yeah, with the other. And so I think that a lot of times we are hypocritical in the things that we say and do. And not that I think that anybody here would want to do any of those things, I just think that sometimes we got to really think things through and the ramifications of some of our actions and some of the things we talk about doing. I think, and personally, I think the mayor wants great parks. I think that he really is committed to that and he's shown that in his budget. But I also think that now council was in a position that we could talk about, there's five of us, I think, that would even consider lowering the mill .5 to keep that balance. So, that would take it out of the budget, but I think that if we're going to talk about not passing these costs on to renters and on to property owners and to not gentrify an area, we really better start looking at all these referendums coming forward. I mean, because, you know, we don't know that the children's tax is not coming back again next year. We don't know if the school district's going to raise their taxes. We did have the tax, you know, now for the tax for the park. Before that, it was the tax for the libraries. And all that somehow gets paid for by the people who can sometimes least afford it in the city. Our senior citizens, our college students that are paying, or graduates that are paying off student debt and can't even afford a home in the city of Pittsburgh, but, you know, it's somehow they're going to be taxed one way or the other, whether they own a home or whether they're paying rent. That taxes somehow, that cost is going to be absorbed by somebody. And so I just want to say, let's make sure that when we're going forward, that we're doing all that we can to keep costs affordable, especially rents affordable in the city of Pittsburgh. And let's not just say we're going to do it, let's really do it.
Harris?
Yeah, I have to say the same thing, but council will still have a bite out of the apple there, where we will vote if it's going to be a tax increase or not a tax increase, even though it was on the ballot, and knowing that it is
Whether they form a committee or not.
And whether they form a committee or not. So, as far as the city tax goes, I found jesterdy just talking to the people for the no vote. Those that are renters could care less and voted for it. The people that own the property, especially the low-income people, are very disturbed about it. And then this morning, they had one, that school district might raise taxes, what, 2.5%? So, I think it's pretty bad, pretty soon, you know, you're going to have, just like you did with the school district, have everybody flee because their kids couldn't go to the nearest school. You're going to have people fleeing the city that own homes here and
It's an elitist tax.
You're going to end up with just building more and more apartments for people that come and go within three to four years. They're here and then they're gone.
Very much. Anyone else? I would echo Councilwoman Smith's and I think statement about all those who ran. I want to not only congratulate those who won, but those who ran and exercised their constitutional rights to run and the people who supported them and came out on a rainy day and volunteered and stand on poles. It really is all that activity. Everybody who participates in this democratic system, they're the ones that should be congratulated. A few of us get to have victory, but so many of them, you know, put their blood, sweat, and tears into campaigns. And for all those who have participated in yesterday's election, we want to, regardless of the outcome, certainly you've made our city stronger and I want to congratulate all of you. Any, if, anything, anything else for the good of the city? If not, Mr. Calke?
I just wanted to comment on that park tax yesterday. And Councilwoman Kell Smith, you said it best, I mean, the divide on this. I was getting results from my polls and it was 70, 80% against that vote. And I'm proud of my district for coming out. And they come out in droves to vote against it. You know, going forward, I mean, I guess, you know, the results are what they are, we have to deal with it. For me, anything less than, say, it's $10 million coming in a year, anything less than $1,300,000 that doesn't go into my parks, I want to do anything and everything we can to direct that money into, equally into each district. I don't, I don't have any faith in the conservancy. I have no faith in their ratings of what parks are in most need or not. So, whatever powers we have, I look for the direction of the people who have been here to make sure that it's equitable and that my parks get, you know, at least they're one-ninth of the funds that are going to be allocated.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rossberger first.
Thank you. And so I will just pick up on one thing that you said, Councilman, and you said equally and then you said equitably, and I will echo that. It needs to be equitable. And I will be the first to say that the parks in my district aren't that many, they're doing okay. We raised some private dollars, federal dollars, state dollars for Whitman Park, it's happening now. And, you know, Mellon Park's doing okay. We have some rad-funded parks nearby. We don't need, we don't need funding. If, if we're going to be deciding upon equitable allocation, I am more than willing to prioritize those parks and districts outside of mine. And I will, I will fight for that.
May I also, Mr. Tier? So, I agree. And the transparency issue, right? We're concerned about backdoor privatization and these kinds of cooperative agreements. Again, they need to be in public discussion and in the public eye, so that we know that the public supports them, right? So we can't just have these kind of backdoor conversations. So I really appreciate my colleagues and the administration kind of committing to that. And similarly, around that kind of community conversation that needs to happen at this table, because they're public dollars and not at another table, where, you know, you're not sure that your constituents are supporting the ratings or the choices. This is the right, this is the table. So we have taxation with representation that needs to have that conversation about those parks. I would also put out that we have, we know that the areas in the city where there are children and low-income children, really, I think it's an obvious place where we hear from constituents who need to get to parks and either don't have safe routes to the parks or the parks are not maintained or there's something dangerous at the parks. So I look forward to having the conversation in a very public way, accountable way and transparent way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. I, I won't
I'm ready.
I won't broadcast, won't broadcast my thoughts yet. But I would rather talk to the members about it, because I think there are two things that will come before us, at least two things. And so I think that's a conversation I want to have with the members. I think both the authorization to, the authorization to tax has to come before us. And I mean, I'm not positive about this yet, but I haven't looked into my understanding. And I think the co-op agreement with the organization that will distribute the funds also has to come before us. And I think that we should, I get, I won't, I won't telegraph yet my opinion about that, but I have some very strong opinions as to what both those things should look like if they come before us. And so we'll have that conversation at the appropriate time. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just want to say that, like you said, bringing it up fairly, and just with the four parks and the 7.7 million each year that was given to the four rad parks, now Cotton, the one that was on Mount Washington, Frick looks great, Shenley looks great. And if you look at Riverview with the landslides that were there and are still there, that that money has not been spent equitably. So, and the money that was left there, the mayor took it away because he wanted to spend it on something else, probably in Squirrel Hill again.